The eighteenth Council Agenda session, and I'll call this meeting to order. Could I have motion on the minutes, please? All right, we have a motion on the minutes with a proper second with no objection. The minute will stand as recorded. So this afternoon, we have several final readings on planning items, A through I. Does anybody have any questions or comments about any of the final reading versions of planning, A through I? Councilman Ledford.
Chairman, just want to point out item I is the text amendment alternate version in the RTZ.
That's correct, and it did pass on first reading. So if there will, if there are no objections from the council, I will take these as a package this afternoon. That now takes us to resolutions under planning. Madam Clerk, would you read that, please?
A resolution approving a special exemptions permit for a new liquor store located at seventy-seven zero-three Lee Highway.
Councilwoman Burris, that is in your district. We did defer that last week in your absence. Any comment on that? Hit it again. There we go.
I think the week before last, I discussed my feelings about that. That is in the new area that we're going to be turning around, and so I don't think it needs any further discussion now.
Okay. I will be asking for the applicant and any opposition that is present this afternoon to be able to present.
I have, there won't be any opposition present that I know of. However, I've heard from a number of people, both the Silverdare area parents and owners of businesses around there. So there has been a lot of opposition. But it's discretionary with us, so I'll be making the motion.
Okay, and I will handle this as any other special permit in planning as like a pod or anything else.
Thank you, sir.
All right, that takes us down to parks and public works, which we covered, I think, last week. Councilman Hester, is that correct, all these items? I'm going to point out an item under E, a resolution authorizing the Department of Public Works and Transportation to erect a commemorative secondary sign as Mary Ellen Locer Way. And we have had a request for this item to be moved up in the agenda, and I have no problems with that. Is there any council members that would object to this item being moved to the front of the agenda? Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, maybe if we could have a new agenda printed for this six o'clock meeting and have item, I guess that's, what is it? Six, six E? Seven E, I'm sorry. Seven E moved to the front of our agenda. Thank you, ma'am. All right, that covers all of our agenda items this afternoon. Any items that you might have under purchases? Any purchase item questions this afternoon? All right. January the twenty-fifth agenda will be canceled, so we're not even going to ask for that, that item. Or I guess if you have a question about that item, we could go ahead and take it now. Okay. And that item will be rolled to our February the first meeting. All right, future considerations, also known as our three-week look ahead. Councilman Ledford.
Chairman, thank you. On item C, can someone from admin tell me, Paige Jermaine, what were the changes that need to be made?
Thank you, Councilman Ledford. So approximately one year ago, the City Council adopted the resolution authorizing the donation agreement. So we felt that because of the lapse in time, that this was not substantially in the form attached, doesn't cover or speak to a sort of a year delay in process. And so that is why this, this item is coming back before the City Council to acknowledge that a year has passed and to just make sure that the City Council is aware that this project is still trying to move forward, provided that it gets the financing that it needs.
Does it have any financial edits?
It will not have any fin, no, sir. It will not have any financial edits.
Okay, very good. And under public works, Chairman, I had a question. Is the high water road closure system, is that similar to what we installed at Davidson Road?
Don, will you come?
I think Mr. Stone's here.
Do I?
Do you know what item I'm referring to, Mr. Stone? It's item B under public works. It is a high water road closure at flood-prone streets within the city.
This is under future considerations.
Yeah. I'm just curious if that is the same thing we installed on Davidson Road.
I will double check on that, sir, because I have not, wasn't aware that this item was placed there, but I definitely will find that out and get back to you.
Follow up with me on that offline, and then I'd also like to know if we're going to implement the text messaging component of that as well, because I have found that to be extremely useful to area residents.
Sure.
When that is activated. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
All right. Any other questions under future considerations? All right. Seen no lights. That concludes all of our items under agenda. Is there anything else that needs to come before the council at this time before we go into our Public Safety Committee meeting? All right. Seeing no other lights, Councilman Bird, I'm going to turn the floor, the chair, over to you for our Public Safety Committee meeting.
Thank you. May I have approval of the minutes? Thank you. We have approval of the minutes in a second. Today, we are now in Public Safety Committee meeting, and this is time for our quarterly report and from Park. And I would like to ask Ms. Baker to come forward. Hello, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Good afternoon.
It is always good to see you, and we are all ears, my lady.
All right. So you guys in advance received the quarterly report, which covers October, November, and December of 2021, the cases. And per our usual, I guess, process, I indicate how many cases we reviewed and the number of officers, the breakdown between citizen complaints and the internally generated complaints. You note, you know, how often that citizen complaints are, a violation is found, and the same with the internally generated complaints. Because it was the end of the year, I went ahead and gave you guys the stats for the whole year, January through December 2021. Park reviewed one hundred and sixty-three cases last year. There were some cases where the ultimate decision made by the chief was not the same as the Park's result, meaning we maybe exonerated the officer or found a sustained violation, and the chief found the opposite in that particular case. But I did note that in three cases, there was only a partial disagreement where we might, there might be four policies in question, and we agreed with, or the chief agreed with our recommendation on three of the four. So it wasn't a complete disagreement. And then I did note, like, like the example, the hypothetical, that in one case, the chief actually found a violation of policy where Park did not. So I think that speaks to the process that has been implemented through the ordinance that you guys approved, that it gives the community of representation in reviewing these cases. And, you know, the fact that we don't always agree with the chief, I think that's a normal part of this type of process. You know, the chief and the assistant chief that review the cases after Park does, they have, you know, the internal knowledge of, you know, the policies more than we do. And so I think that, that might be why there is some disagreement. And then I remember one case where we thought there had been a violation of policy, but when the assistant chief went back and reviewed the case, he, he found, well, no, the officer had done the report as required, and we didn't have that information. So, you know, sometimes the disagreements are because we didn't have all the information at the time. I, in the second category, I note the categories of violations, they're broken down into the, you know, the types of policies that we see and the fact patterns. There's, you know, the improper investigations and subordination, pursuit policy violations. You guys have that. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer those at this time.
I've seen E. Okay, hold on one second. Councilman Ledford.
Chairman, thank you, and thank you all for the work you do. I mean, I know we say that a lot, but this is really serious and very beneficial work, and you all pour your hearts into it, and I just, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Because you, you're really doing a great service for your community, and this requires a lot of time. There's no doubt about it. Hundred and sixty-three cases, that's in a year that you reviewed, that's been generated to you. Chief Scruggs, how many, I remember hearing in a previous presentation by Chief Roddy, two-hundred-plus-thousand interactions.
That's correct.
A year? Is that, am I somewhere in the neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
And out of that, one hundred and sixty-three, I wish it was three or one, but it's not. But still, it's over, probably, I think it was closer to a quarter of a million, if I remember.
We answer a lot of calls for service.
And I really, I just, and this was a good thing we put into place. We have really good people working this, and I'm glad to see this conversation going on. And Chairman, thank you for your leadership on this, because you worked very hard on this. And I really just, I just wanted to say that. I don't really have any questions per se, because I can read the report, but anything you want to add that we can continue to, to move forward? I'm always looking for better.
One thing that's worth noting is that some of these days are pretty long days for these folks. I mean, they start at nine o'clock, and they're reading these cases over before they actually get to the meetings, and they don't conclude till one o'clock, two o'clock sometimes. So they put a ton of work in, and they hold me to the fire, they question me about every little thing that pops up, and they're good questions, and we try to provide the best answers for them. So the process has been working. Initially, I would say Kay would probably agree that there was some apprehension or some, there was a whole lot more question on the front end than there are now. Folks are a lot more comfortable with our process, and they see that we aren't just rubber-stamping these complaints. We're actually very thoroughly going through them, so the process is really working.
And you made a great point, because this report reflects that there's conversation, there's dialogue, there's some disagreements, and I think that does prove that it is working. And when it comes to transparency, which I remember hearing about this in the beginning, you know, I feel like you're here about every three weeks, presenting to us, and I don't know how much more transparent that can get, to be honest with you. So I just, I mean, thank you for your work on this, both of you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Burris.
Kay, I'm going to say what I've said a couple of times. You're working really, really hard, and the success of the committee has a lot to do with your character, your credibility, and the fact that you, you run a good shop. I have one question. Are all of the appointees showing up and participating? And if not, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if not, let us know. One of the things that we've been talking about is all of the committees being active and present and representative of their communities. I, my colleagues can speak for themselves, but if there's ever a case where our District Six representative is not there, then I need to know about it. Thank you. Thank you for, for showing up and for doing this for us and for representing a very important aspect to the community. Chief, thanks for working in partnership. It's something that we hoped would happen well, and it is, and thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Kay, one thing that I have a couple of questions about is that I know this, this committee would not park, so to say, wouldn't work as good as it worked without an amazing person like you. And I know one day, you're going to transition and probably move on. And I want to make sure before that happens, that this foundation is set up to whoever you pass it on to, they have a process and they have the ability to move this forward, because I think it creates a cover for our community, for our police department, for this council. And right now, I still don't think as many people understand how important Park is to this community. And I want to make sure we give you all the tools you need to make sure that this foundation is solid, because we need to have it solid. Because there's still a couple of questions that I have, like, what happens after there's a disagreement between Park and the chief? Is there anything that triggers to where this body, if we notice that, can pull that up and look at it and say, hey, let's have a conversation about it, let's talk about it, and see why there was a disagreement there?
Well, I, I think, so what the process is Park makes a recommendation, and it goes back to the police department. The assistant chief reviews the cases just like we did, you know, the statements, interviews, videos, whatever. The assistant chief makes his or her recommendation. Then the chief, and right now, that's Chief Tucker, he does the same thing. He goes through the case, reviews things. I remember recently, he found a violation, a policy that we hadn't found. So, I mean, you know that they're doing their job, because they're finding things that we didn't see. So then, his decision is his decision. If his decision, if his decision doesn't match ours, I don't like to call them disagreements, they just don't match.
I understand.
He sends a memo and explains, you know, I found a violation, or I didn't find a violation, and you were the opposite, and here, here was my process. And that's how we found out that one time that, that there had been a report filed, it was just filed incorrectly, or they hadn't found it timely for us, but it was in the, it was in the file. So, so if the, if there is a disagreement, and you have questions about that, I think those questions would be better directed at the chief, because he's the one that ultimately decided, he's the final say. So, I mean, we could certainly provide, you know, case information to the commit, the council, or to you, if you're spearheading that effort. And then you could have a sit-down with the chief, because Park really wouldn't have, you know, we don't have a dog in that fight, so to speak.
I understand. I think I just want to make sure things are as plain and simple as possible, especially for our constituents to understand, the council can understand as well. Are there anything, are there some things in the ordinance that you feel that may need tweaking, or may need some adjusting, or things that we need to look at?
Yeah, I mean, over the, you know, I've been the chair now a year and a half, and I was a lawyer in my former life, so I, I read stuff like, or I used to read stuff like this a lot. And there, there are a few things, some are just typos. You know, there's a list in there, and there's two number twos, and the second number two has no words after it. I mean, the, you know, housekeeping, just cleaning it up. But then there are about four or five parts of the ordinance where it's inconsistent with another part.
Okay.
For instance, in one of the subsections, it's sixteen sixty-three subsection B mandates that the chair reviews the cases and decides if more investigation needs to be done. But then, basically leaving everybody else out.
Right.
But then later on, in, I think it's sixteen sixty-four G, it talks about what the committee does. They get a case, they review the case. If they think there's additional information that's needed or additional investigation that's needed, they, the, the committee as a group sends the case back to the chief or to the CPD and says, you know, we'd like more investigation. You know, we heard there were ten witnesses, but we heard, we saw only five statements. What happened to those other five people? That's a hypothetical, it has not ever happened. But, and we have never sent a case back requesting additional information to date. But, but in the ordinance, so it's confusing and it's inconsistent. Though in the one section, it says that I, as the chair, would decide, oh, there needs to be more investigation, and that cuts out, it's just inconsistent, and I don't think that's what the, the council intended. I don't think they intended for one person to make that decision. And so that would be a way to clean the, clean up the ordinance and just remove that. I mean, obviously, you know, the council would have to review it and decide with the city attorney on whether that changes anything in a different place, but that would be one area that I think it could be cleaned up a little bit. The bigger issue, I think, is that throughout the ordinance, it just talks about citizen complaint, citizen complaint, citizen complaint, but we know, because we've had this discussion, that you want us to review any case that's brought against a police officer, whether it was seen or experienced by a citizen or not. Because as we know, when an officer is involved in a use of force or a pursuit, they have to do a report. Well, a citizen might not have been aggrieved by that action, but through the review of those supervisors and chiefs of that report, they found a violation of a policy. And it could have been, well, the pursuit was, was initiated properly, but at a point, the officer should have called it off because of all these reasons that are in their pursuit policy. So I think to be clear and to, to affect the intent, I think, of this ordinance, which is to review all issues as they relate to police conduct.
Gotcha.
Or misconduct, that we need to clean that up and add some language that would reference these internal complaints.
Understood. Hold on one.
Those are just a few things that I've, I've thought of as I've been looking through these cases.
Perfect, perfect. Hold on one second. Councilman, Chairman Chip Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kay, let's go back to the, I guess, requesting more information. You said in one place that directs the chair to do that, and in another place, it's the committee. What if, what if the language just read and we eliminated maybe sixteen point sixty-four, but what if, what if, or, or we could leave that one in, eliminate the other one? What if it read, it directs the chair to request after the committee has requested it? I think, I think maybe what the intent is, is for one, kind of one person being the directive to do it, to request. So the, the committee would still have a role in it, but the chair would ultimately do the requesting.
Yeah, and that would, that would, I think, be consistent with what the intent would be. Because, yeah, any communications typically from the committee to any outside body, a city council or the police, it comes through the chair.
So would it be better to eliminate sixteen point sixty-four G and just put sort of that language of directing the chair to request it after the, or directing the chair to request after a committee has requested more information? And I'll tell you what would be helpful is if, and maybe I have it and I didn't see it, would be a copy of the request or changes that you're asking for, so that we can better define what we're doing.
Sure. And, and I can put that in, in some kind of an email.
That'd be great, yeah.
With some ideas, and obviously, and I may, I was, I was, sorry, I was looking at the wrong section. Because, yeah, I mean, you could add a few words to sixteen sixty-four G and add the chair is the conduit, you know, something like that.
Yeah.
Because sixteen sixty-four, I think it's, it's, it, it needs tweaking too, because it is, it's confusing, and that's one of the ones where there's two number twos, and the second number two doesn't have anything after it. But it, even that is confusing, and it could be written a little bit better to make it clear, and then add the, the final step is the chair, you know, directs the chief to conduct additional investigation or something, something like that.
Okay. I'll tell you, why don't you submit that information to the chair of our committee, and he can forward it to the entire council?
I can do that. And before I forget, could I address Councilwoman Bird's comment?
Please, and that's all the questions I have.
All right, thank you, sir.
Sorry.
And if you, hold on one second, ma'am. Councilwoman Burris, you are active, and you may address her now.
And I have one question for you as well.
Go ahead.
Oh, you want me to ask?
Oh, I don't care. My question was, you used, I, I don't have the law in front of me as, as, like the chair. We use the word citizen in the law?
It, it basically says citizen complaints, like.
We might think in terms of resident, because people who aren't citizens get equal protection, at least from our police department. Something to think about.
Sure. Right, I, I made a note of that.
Okay, thanks.
And then I, I just wanted to follow up on your, your question about, you know, members that are nominated by each district. There has been some confusion, and so when you do nominate a new person, they need to know, and I'm going to be better, if I'm the chair, when, next time we roll around, as the chair to tell them, just because you can't vote, you still need to attend the meetings.
Okay.
Because attending the meetings helps you understand what we're doing, and, and you can ask questions. De Visser, one of our, I think she's District One, maybe? Is she, is she yours? So she attended before she had been through the Citizens Academy and done her ride-alongs and done her, the active shooter drill that we have to do. And she could ask questions, she just couldn't vote. But it really helped her navigate the process better, because she understood what we were doing when she was able to, to formally vote. So I'm going to do better, and I'm going to ask the next chair to make sure that anytime there's a new person, you know, they need to be told. But if you could individually, you know, help remind them that once they're nominated and they are on the committee, just because they can't vote, they should still attend meetings.
They're required to attend meetings, I think, aren't they?
I'd have to read the language to see if, if it's specific on that issue, because if they're not a voting member yet, does it, does it require you to attend meetings, but only if you're a voting member? I don't, I haven't gotten into the weeds on that.
It should probably be corrected to say that, because one of the things we've been looking at across the board is, is committee membership, attendance, that sort of thing. I think Councilwoman Hill, that's under your committee, right? Boards and commissions and that kind of thing, yeah. And so I think probably if someone is appointed, they're required to attend, even if it's their learning or probationary period or whatever, they, they should attend. So my colleagues may disagree, but if you would, if you would put that forward, maybe in whatever the chair has asked you to send us, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Thanks, Kay.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Darian Ledford.
Thank you, Chairman. I was just going to request when the language options come around, if we do that in a redline format, please.
Yes, I definitely agree.
Thank you.
With that redline format, if we could, once you get that to us or to Karen, and Karen gets it to us, could we also get the attorney to go ahead and start creating the, the house cleaning situation to where we're creating a better ordinance than we have now with the things that they have found out? And then we can get that to us, so that we can start getting ready to put it into some type of committee, so we can start to vote on it? Is that okay?
Would you like me to copy Ms. O'Donnell?
The city attorney, yes.
When I send it. I'm sorry?
I think I have your changes to the ordinance.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we had, they've been kind of passed around for, for a little bit, but, yes, ma'am. But I can resend it, you know, with some of the additions that have been talked about today, certainly.
And that's what I was going to say, with some of the conditions that have been added that Councilwoman Carroll has talked about, and Councilman Ledford, I would definitely like to see that come up again. And And as a question, will we have to have another committee for that to review? Or would you want to put that on the agenda and move forward with it? Or would you want to have another committee on that? To the council, another committee? Okay. So once we receive that red line copy from city attorney, then we will set up another committee meeting so that we can review and have some discussion about it. And then we will move forward from there. Is that okay with everyone? Perfect. Okay. All right. I see no more questions. Ms. Baker, do you have anything else to bring to us?
No, I don't.
Man, look forward to seeing those changes and thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
And tell your team, Park, we say thank you as well.
I will definitely do that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Okay, seeing no more questions. We are adjourned till six o'clock.
Thank you, ma'am.